I thought you never knew. Okay, so this is a regular meeting. Why don't we do a roll call, actually a motion first to open the regular meeting?
Motion, open the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Member Alberto, followed by member Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's opened, and we're gonna do a roll call for attendance. Did you start your... Roll call for attendance, member Allen, absent. Member Boucher, present. Member Hefnecker?
Present.
Member Ainucci?
Present.
Member Carlich?
Present.
Member Kelly?
Here.
Member Alberto?
Here.
Okay, and our professionals, we have our engineer from Langatelli, John O'Rourke.
Present.
And our counsel, Elizabeth Cassidy.
Present.
And our first application up is David again.
Thank you enough.
Thirty Carpenter Place.
Hello, Jalisco.
I don't think...
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do anything, David. I think it's just set in a public meeting.
I just...
I just wanted to recognize you because you were here.
And I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Actually, while, since the project is on the agenda, I was hoping to do two things. One is, could we submit the certificate of mailings tonight? They've been done. Can I officially submit them?
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. Is it, Elizabeth?
No, we put the cart, just so the board is aware, because of our unusual schedule, with the chairman's blessing, we put the cart before the horse. So, we have noticed the public hearing for our April 8th. We would not have had enough time to do so had we given, waited till tonight to do the public hearing notice, because we are canceling our meeting in honor, in recognition of Passover, on the 23rd. So, we did instruct the applicant to submit public, to submit the public notice, and Terry has sent that to the paper as well. So, I do have a resolution for the board to formally set the public hearing for April 8th, 2024. And then, just be aware, usual caveats that all us pros have to be up, all us pros have to be up to date.
Yeah, and I think they are.
They are. Okay.
He came in today, right?
I think they are. Yeah, so we can take that, David. Terry will take that. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have just one last item, if the board would indulge me. At the last meeting, we talked about submitting documentation or an argument about the retaining wall and the pier. I did prepare something, we, you know, it has not been submitted, I would just be presenting it to you right now. Is that something that the board can entertain and I could pass around as a submission?
The only, the only problem is, we could, we could look at it.
Right.
Which is fine, we can't really do anything with it, and our professionals wouldn't get to comment on it.
I'd like to, I'd like to review it, so if you can...
Right.
If you can send it to us, we can have it reviewed for the next meeting.
So...
Can I...
You can give us that, but digitally, we need a copy too.
I think you have to officially submit it.
Right.
I, I will, and if anybody wants a hard copy, I'm able to...
Yeah, we, we take a hard copy.
Take a hard copy.
We'll, we'll make an official submission.
Yeah, that's, exactly.
I just, I haven't reviewed it, so I'm not prepared.
Nope. Yeah, we understand.
I'm not asking for a decision, I'm asking...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And can, can I just pull up here, please? Send it to... Can I, we made, as you see, actually, can I, can I have one back? I'm not surrendering mine.
Too late.
Easy come, easy go. My apologies. On our cover letter, we state the two zoning sections that I believe are applicable, and the reasons why it would not apply to this project. After that, we, we provided two sketches from people in my office, which were phenomenal with Photoshop. I'd like to go to the last sketch first. There was a, that would be this one here. All it, all this, all the sketch shows is where the current wall is located, and where it would be moving to. That's the purpose of that sketch. There seemed to be a little bit of, this clarifies any discrepancy in our minds. That would be this sketch. The second sketch is more towards the argument of why the pier above the retaining wall should not be considered a part of the wall. As you can see, the retaining wall, which is on the lower section, has, can be installed in its entirety, complete its function without the pier above it. It would, there's no question. The pier above it, I mean, quite honestly, could be an urn, it could be a wood trellis, it could be a wood post. It has no integral part of the retaining wall, a landscape retaining wall, as defined by the zoning code. So, and, and I dimensioned it accordingly. We do not need it to be as large as what's already been fabricated out there. It can be 10 inch by 10 inch, which aligns with the wall, and, again, serves no purpose in retaining the earth. We drew a line to show what the slope of the earth will eventually look like. That slope does not come up to the pier on top of the retaining wall, it comes down to it.
Mr. Mike, I have a question for you. The wall encroaches on a neighbor's property.
Yes.
Has a neighbor kicked about this, or complained, or...
I haven't, I mean, it was violated, I mean, there was a violation issue by the building department, but I haven't heard anything from the neighbor at all. I mean, nothing.
Do they even know that's, I mean, they know it's, they might not even know it's a property. Anyway, not, I mean, they might, you know.
It does have to be moved, it does have to be moved.
Right, you still have to move it.
Yeah, of course, right. So, just to reiterate, so, the third picture, right, the third page, is what it is existing right now.
Right.
That has to obviously be moved in.
The last page.
The last page, the thirty, the last, okay, the fourth.
That's this one here.
The last page, yeah. And then, what we're proposing basically, is that you're gonna bring this into here in coordinates with where it has to be.
Right.
Does it have to move if the neighbor doesn't care?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to sanction a encroachment of the wall.
And I, and my other question with that was...
They want it moved. What's that? What if you, what if the new owner comes in, they want it moved? They recognize it. They get a survey done, and they say, move your wall. I'm not saying we're, well...
I think the only other problem too is that maybe...
Sanctioning, would it be sanctioning if we didn't have, if we didn't have it moved?
We will be approving the site plan with a shown encroachment of the wall.
Okay, now I get it, you're, you're, you're probably correct.
Probably.
Thanks, counsel.
Come on, I don't get those words. Dave, you're probably correct. I get that once in a while.
So, it has to come in, on this fourth page, this is showing where it has to come in.
Right.
The only thing that technically, we're arguing on ours, is that it can't, this pillar can't be on top of it.
Well, and that's the third, that's this sketch here.
Right, right.
The one with the dimensions and the descriptions and everything.
So, this is pretending like it was moved in, as is...
Correct.
Gotcha.
And, and this page is our argument. Okay, so, I, I know you can't make a decision tonight, I realize, I thank the board for the opportunity to just explain our submission, and we will make a formal submission of this for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I'd make sure that the building inspector gets this, because ultimately, he's, unless something's different, he's the one who makes that call.
Yeah.
And if he makes the call for you, great. If he makes it against you, I don't believe this board can waive it, it's gotta go to the ZBA for variance if it disagrees with the building inspector's interpretation.
That's not what happened at the last meeting, but...
I wasn't here, but I, I know the code, and I don't think this board can...
I will, I will look at it, but I...
You can double check, yeah, it's possible, it's one of those that the planning board could waive, John, is that...
Well, no, so...
It's not?
Just taking a quick look, and I haven't, I haven't looked at this in depth, and I haven't pulled the, the clause sections. What I asked for at the last meeting was the legal authority that the planning board had waiver rights, and there are some provisions of our code that we, we can waive, certain elements of site plan, et cetera. But there's express language in our code, if the planning board is subject to certain findings, can make a waiver. This appears at first blush to provide definitions of retaining walls and other things, but I don't see that as, and it leads more back to John's point, which is, does the retaining wall meet the definition required for that height? That is an interpretation for Jim to make, not necessarily whether we, we can grant a waiver. So, Jim's made an interpretation based on his memo, that the wall either has to be moved, or has to go get a variance, or lower. That's Jim's interpretation. He asked if the planning board could waive that. I had asked him to provide legal authority under our code, that we had the authority to waive it. This appears to provide, and again, I'm just seeing this tonight, this appears to provide definitional information, and an argument based on the definitions, I don't see authority, what's right in front of me, that we have the authority to waive it. So, if it's definitional, we can refer to Jim to make an interpretation, to review that definitional argument. It would still come back to Jim's interpretation. If we don't have the authority to waive it under our code, if the applicant is...
Then they have to go to zoning board.
Yes, goes the ZBA, if they, if they can't comply.
Is it just that it's on the property, or is that pillar also too high? There's a height...
So, the higher the wall, the further setback from the property line it has to be?
So, that pillar is considered the wall?
Is considered part of the wall.
Right.
That was Jim's interpretation.
Yeah, okay.
But again, he may look at these definitions and say, okay, I don't, so I think that's the first step.
Right.
So, I think this is for Jim.
Right, yeah, you want Jim's interpretation.
Not, not a problem. Can I ask one more question? Should I submit this to Jim ahead of time?
You should, you should submit this to everybody. The submission day for the April meeting was yesterday. As a courtesy, we can, if we get this tomorrow, because, again, we are on a shortened timeframe for the April meeting, we can review it. So, I would get this to Terry, copy Terry, copy me, copy John, and then copy Jim.
Okay.
Is it back tomorrow?
Jim's, Jim's not back till Monday, but at least it's on his desk when he comes in on Monday.
Is Elizabeth's suggestion agreeable? Can I have till tomorrow to send it out electronically?
Yeah.
I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the courtesy, thank you very much. Okay, we will send it out, it will go out in tomorrow's email.
Okay, perfect, and Elizabeth, you have a resolution?
I do.
Okay, so if you read that in?
Let me, David. Again, the corner post has been lowered to two feet.
Yeah.
The corner post, that's in question, has been lowered to two feet.
No.
No.
No. The, the, the corner post is two feet above the two-foot retaining wall. The height, the four, the total height of the landscape retaining wall and the corner pier is four feet.
It should, what Jim is saying, it should be two feet.
I, yeah, we all acknowledge that, I'm, I'm peeling that.
What I'm saying is that you have, you're proposing to take down the old wall.
We have, yes.
They have to.
We have to.
Yes, no, I understand. Again, this is all proposal right now. They have to. If he doesn't want to, maybe he can go out and buy the property next door. How do I know? Bottom line is, you're gonna move the wall. The floor needs to basically what Jim said to you. You're moving the wall, and the wall will be four feet off the line. The pier will be four feet off the line also, even though the pier is two feet lower. It's equal height to the wall.
No.
I, I'm not...
The pier, the pier goes above the wall.
The wall is...
Two feet above the wall.
That's the way it is now.
And that's the way it's gonna be then. He's just moving, this is, it's moving it back.
Anybody see that?
This is the proposed.
Does that, I see the proposed.
Yeah.
Does that stay within code?
The, the height, Jim has, Jim has issued a determination of the height of that pier. The pier does not meet code.
Right.
That the height of the wall is acceptable, but the pier, which is above the, the wall, does not meet...
By two feet, does not meet.
Does not meet in that location. It can either be moved back further from the property line, or it can be shortened. Those are the two options, under Jim's current interpretation.
Are we looking at the original spot, or the proposed spot?
The proposed spot, as shown on the site plan, the proposed site plan. Because they have to move the wall regardless, the wall has to move.
The wall, the wall's moving, and the corner pier will be, the way this is presented, the corner pier is two feet high, and then you have a decorative piece on top of it.
Just the opposite, the retaining wall is two feet high.
Correct.
And then we have a decorative piece on top of that. So, I thank everybody.
Yep, anything more from the board?
Thank you very much.
Can I just have, can we have a formal resol...
Yeah, so if you'd read the resolution into the minutes, and then we can vote.
I have it more fancy typed out, but it's really just the secret history. Whereas the Village of Monroe Planning Board is in receipt of an application by Montana's Valley LLC for an estate plan and special use permit approval to allow construction of an expanded patio and trellis. Whereas a short form environmental assessment form dated August 31st, 2023, was submitted for review. And whereas after comparing the thresholds contained in six NYCRR, six seventeen point four and five, the planning board had determined that the proposed project is an unlisted action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And they, and I apologize, my Dropbox did not sync. So, we, we have previously declared an agency, I believe that was back in July, so you're gonna take my word for it, and I will get that right. So, I'm working on an old version. All right, and we, we elected to do an unwarranted review. So, the important part is, be it further resolved, that a public hearing shall be held on the application at 7:00 PM on April 8th, 2024, as soon thereafter as the app, the application may be heard. And in addition, I will incorporate, it doesn't really matter, because he's already published the public notice, I will incorporate the public notice requirements into that resolution. And I apologize, my drafts did not sync, so I'm not syncing.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that one.
Okay, member Ainucci, you can second.
I'll second.
Member Kelly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Terry, I'll get you an updated resolution. And you don't have to do anything, because it's already been done.
Okay, all right.
Happy New Year.
Thanks, David. All right, so, second up tonight is the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center, and that's really just, I think it's... We need, do we need to lead agency again, because we're gonna do a coordinated view, review with the zoning board of appeals, right?
So, this board, just to give a procedural history and the applicant, I'm breaking my rule of discussing the application without the applicant here.
They could have come.
They could have come, they, they, and I, they advised that they would not, because this is a procedural vote.
Right.
So, this application was before us last year. We had adopted uncoordinated lead agency, because there were no, really no other agencies involved, it was just us. Village Board adopted the local law changing the spatial requirements of the parking lot, which then triggered a need to go to the zoning board of appeals. They went to the zoning board of appeals, and we kinda all slipped us, slipped our minds as to how do we process seeker. We had started seeker so long ago, we kinda put it out of our heads, and the ZBA was, came back and asked us to do a coordinated review. The applicant has submitted a request that we update our seeker resolution, instead of declaring lead agency, declare intent to be lead agency. We will then circulate that for 30 days. And Terry, don't worry, I will explain everything you need to know for circulation. So, we will circulate for 30 days, and then, following the circulation, once that 30-day period is up, we can then assume lead agency. So, right now, the tentative schedule is, I believe they have made a submission yesterday for the submission date, so we will be declaring lead agency this evening. We can't take any action at the April 8th meeting, but we could review your updated submissions, provide additional comments, and the purpose of that is for them to complete seeker. So, they're going to complete seeker with us, and if they successfully complete seeker, would then go back to the zoning board of appeals for final action on their variance application, and then ZBA would rely on our seeker determination.
Which means they're still taking, at their own risk.
They're taking, they're absolutely taking a risk, the applicant is aware of that, the applicant has canceled, and that's, that's their prerogative. So, the theory is, the Langatelli and I will review the newest submission, provide comments at the April meeting, they will then have enough time to turn around for the April submission date for the May meeting. By the time the May meeting rolls around, our 30 days will have elapsed, we can then assume lead agency, and if appropriate, we can then be in a position to address the seeker and either, and adopt a, a negative declaration. Or adopt a positive declaration and then, I think it's leaning towards a neg, but I don't wanna, I'm not giving it to them yet. All right. So, I did prepare a resolution. If you'd like, I can...
Any questions anybody has on that before...
If we already declared lead agency.
So...
How are we doing, I mean, what, I mean, we're doing that again?
Well, we're rescinding that at, so the issue is, right now, because we only declared lead agency without coordinated review, the ZBA can conduct its own independent review as a code. So, there's two ways. Each agency can conduct their own review until the first agency says there's a, there's an adverse environmental impact, and then everybody has to, to pause. I think the more efficient way is to conduct a coordinated review, where we finish out the seeker, they can then rely on our seeker findings in making their, in making the determination.
It's basically procedural, just based upon this...
Yeah, no, I get it. By the way, Elizabeth, you know, it doesn't mention in this here, not that that's your issue, it's probably wrong, I'm guessing, but we don't have a date when we did declare lead agency.
July 25th, 2023.
Is that in here?
No, that's gonna be in my resolution.
Right, so this was, it was left out of this one. That's the resolution, this is just...
That's the date I have, I have in my notes, but I, and typed, so I'm assuming that it was July 20, it was our July 23rd, 2023 meeting.
Yeah, we have nothing from that meeting, just the EAF on June 27th, but, okay.
Is it in the, or what are you looking at, John?
I'm looking at the agenda, where we keep the track of all those things that we did. It didn't, it's not recorded here, that's all.
I would double check them, and it should be in the...
Yeah, yeah, probably.
I just, I have the draft, I have the resolution that I typed in the day.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, so do you wanna read the resolution?
Sure. Whereas the Village of Monroe Planning Board is in receipt of an application by Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center for site plan approval to construct a place of religious assembly consisting of a building with a footprint of 14,596 square feet, with a total square footage of approximately 20,000 square feet, 102 parking spaces, and outdoor congregation space. Whereas a short environmental assessment form, EAF, dated August 1st, 2022, last revised June 27th, 2023, was submitted for review. Whereas by resolution dated July 25th, 2023, the Village of Monroe Planning Board declared lead agency for purposes of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas subsequent to that resolution, the Village Board of the Village of Monroe adopted a local law which resulted in the need for variance from the Village of Monroe Zoning Board of Appeals. And whereas after examining the EAF, the planning board has determined, the following agencies are involved or interested agencies for purposes of seeker, Village of Monroe Planning Board, Village of Monroe Z, Zoning Board of Appeals, Orange County Sewer District Number One, Village of Monroe TPW, and, oh, you said number... Sorry. I have those numbers. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the planning board makes the following findings. The proposed action is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. The action may involve one or more agencies. The action is preliminarily classified as an unlisted action pursuant to six NYCRR, Part six seventeen. Coordinated review of the action is appropriate. Be it further resolved, that the planning board hereby declares its intent to be lead agency for further review of this action. Be it further resolved, that the planning board secretary shall pause notice of such intent to be circulated in accordance with seeker. Be it further resolved, that a determination of significance will be made at such time as all information has been received by the planning board to enable it to determine whether or not the action will or will not have a significant effect on the environment. Last being further resolved. Be it further resolved, that the planning board's resolution declaring lead agency dated July 25th, 2023, is hereby rescinded and of no further force of effect.
Make a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Member Ainucci, you can second.
Second.
Member Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
So, just to finalize that timeframe, they have submitted, so they'll be on for four eight for comment.
Comment, yeah.
Based on that comment, we may be in a position to, we had scheduled a public hearing back in December, we left it open because of the ZBA issue, we'll reset the date for the May meeting.
Hmm.
Okay, for, to continue the public hearing, I would recommend, given the timeframe, that they renotice that.
Yeah.
And then, depending on the results, and I have not made any promises or any guarantees, we would continue that, and then we could close the public hearing initiative. Whether that happens at the May meeting or the June meeting, that will be that.
So, let me ask you a question about that. So, if it goes on to the zoning board, and the zoning board doesn't grant the variances...
They would have to redo.
Right, in which case, the public meeting wouldn't have talked about what should have been there.
They would have to redesign the project, and likely, we would reopen the public hearing, and we'd also reopen, we would reopen seeker.
Definitely start the process all over.
All over again, with the new plan.
Based off of ground zero.
I was just making sure, 'cause I'm thinking, no, yeah.
Now, they, they have a preliminary sketch plan, and I'm not their counsel, so I defer to their counsel as to how they wish to present the application.
Yeah.
They have a preliminary sketch of it complying.
The other way.
Yeah.
Reverse, yeah.
And this may be, and I'm not giving my opinion, a situation where complying is not as good as the variant, you know, we kinda had that with 251 High Street, where you could get a complying subdivision, but it was ugly, and you remember, we remember...
Well, I think, I thought the same thing on that particular place, on this project, because it would be bringing that whole burden forward.
So, he may be presenting that as an alternative, and showing, normally, we, in a full environmental impact statement, which we're not, this doesn't rise to that level, we're not requiring that, we have an issue with positive declaration. It's not like a 208 business center that requires that.
John, did you look at the...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't mind giving my opinion on that.
You can.
But, so, yeah, the plan they have now, to be honest with you, is probably the best plan that they're gonna develop. If they go back and they meet the zoning, they're gonna have much more disturbance, it's gonna be more of an impact to neighbors, it'll...
The sight of it.
Yeah, right, I mean, it's a corridor, it's gonna, what, what they have there now kinda matches where Town Hall is, and that's kind of true, that, the same way. If they put the parking in the back, that the amount of grading and filling they're gonna have to do is gonna be massive, and they're gonna take all those cars, and all the noise associated with those cars, and put it next to the residential units. So, from an environmental impact and engineering impact, it doesn't make any sense to do that, but your code requires it. But if I was gonna say the best plan is what they have now.
So, I did suggest to their attorney and their engineer, that they, that they include in their submission, if you make us comply, this is what it looks like, and then provide to us the ramifications, so that we can weigh that as part of our seeker review.
So, can they, from your perspective, John, when you looked at it, can they get, can they redesign it, does it fit, if they, if they did the redesign?
If, yeah, they, they own the property, and they have the congregation, so no matter Yeah, they, they own the property and they have the congregation. So no matter what the zoning does, what the variances, ultimately, there's going to be a project here.
Okay, so they can do, in other words, it doesn't, right, it doesn't stomp anything because they could just flip flop it like this building is now required.
It would be a complete redesign.
Yes.
It's not as easy as just taking the building and moving it up to front.
No.
It would be a complete redesign.
Right.
But they're not going away.
Can they do nothing and just operate as they are right now? Like, I'm just curious.
Sure, they could, just like anybody could in your house, but their congregation is growing and the wall is.
And I'm just curious, like, right, so right now, right, the Islamic Center is operating as Islamic Center, right? And the parking lot, which kind of became a makeshift stone parking lot with some white stripes on there, with no lighting whatsoever, is that on us whatsoever? That's okay? That they're just kind of operating like that? I mean, dust, no lights, no safety issues? Is that? Just curious, because I.
So there's congregations of different sizes and different requirements kick in. That's a Jim question.
Okay.
It also never came before us for that, so.
Because there's.
We wouldn't have anything to, right.
But a neighborhood place doesn't necessarily need, you know.
Right, depending on the numbers.
Again, it was an existing building.
Yeah.
So Jim basically said, yes, you're an existing building, existing use, you're allowed in that district. And with religious, it gets very touchy with certain federal regulations and what you can ask for, what you cannot ask for. So, but could they operate the way they are right now and keep on going? They both certainly could.
With that one light in the parking lot, so to speak.
Exactly, that's why, from our point of view, engineering wise, this is a better project. They're going to clean up the site from what's there. If you remember, they're having landscaping in the front. They're rebuilding that stone wall in the front. They're putting in lighting. They're running a fire line for fire safety to the new building, so.
What about the complaints on the roof?
And they also get their basement floor that they really need.
They have to redesign that part.
With this redesign?
Not with the redesign, with the old design.
Yeah, yeah, with, with the new building, yes.
Right. The new design, a redesign according to code, they're not going to have that.
Sure they will. They'll just do, they'll just do grading. They're going to move that house, the building up front.
It'll just be a massive movement of dirt.
Yeah, they're just going to take.
What about the height of the building?
They could still do what they're doing. The height is the height.
And they're asking for a variance on the height now, so if that's, if that variance is denied.
It'll be higher. You've got to remember, that land slopes in the back.
It slopes up, doesn't it?
It slopes up.
Yeah.
It slopes up.
Down in the front.
Technically, it'd be lower, technically, I believe.
It's down in the front.
Unless they would, you know.
The reason that you're not seeing it back because it looks like it's, you won't see the back of it the way it currently is presented to us. It sits down, right? But it's, it sits way back. Up front, you move that thing up front, it's going to be much more in your face.
So I just.
Well, definitely.
I don't want to get too, again, I want to be like, again, our rules on not talking with the applicant here. We have the procedural.
You've already broken the rule. Let it go. Let it go.
So.
You've already broken the rule.
I have a question about that. Like, so it's a workshop, right? They're supposed, just because they're not here means you're technically, you can't talk about it? I'm just curious, like, why can't we?
They have the right to be here.
Right, so, but they're not, it's not on, so we can't talk?
Well, because we had a meeting and basically because this was just procedural, right? We're just scheduling this.
Right.
They're not here.
Okay.
So again, it's not, it's, I'll say a gray area. I mean, we can kind of describe what they're doing, but they're not here to defend themselves. Like, certain questions like, are you going to move the building up front? Would you have a basement?
But John, we're asking you professional questions.
No, and that's what I'm saying. It's a gray area and that's, and that's why we generally.
Gray area or not, it's like a work session now.
Well, no.
No.
Not quite. I think if we're going to earn this on a caution. Yeah.
These are all valid questions. I would, I would save them because, look, we just got a submission. I have not had, I haven't, we got the submissions yesterday. Terry's been busy, a busy bee uploading all of those. I haven't had a chance to review that. I will have that reviewed. So we can then, I think these are all great questions to save for the applicant. And we certainly can give applicant, the applicant a copy of these minutes so that they, they can respond. So from a procedural standpoint, just to button that up, we have our, we have our resolution. I would coordinate with you as to how to do seeker circulation. Probably not tomorrow, probably Thursday.
Yeah, it'll be Thursday.
And they'll be on for, they have submitted for the eighth. That's an opportunity to raise all these issues and all have our comments and review. They'll do whatever they need to do theoretically. If we're in a good spot on the eighth, we should be scheduling for a public hearing for the May meeting. I will not be here for the May meeting. Elise Terhune has arranged with Elise to cover and I will give her everything she needs.
Just out of curiosity as well, so I'll talk about the, the public hearing. Last time the public hearing was here, I don't remember how, well, however, months ago, a lot of the congregation got here. And I want to make sure that anybody who has something to say can definitely get in, have a seat. Are we definitely having it here? Is it possible that it would be?
If, if the board wishes, we can discuss and we can make arrangements for Town Hall if it's appropriate.
We did try last time.
We had a scheduling issue.
We had a scheduling issue.
Right. So if you remember the last meeting, it was a little congested in here.
Yeah, it was packed.
To the point where some people actually that did have public comment weren't, had to be out there and made a kind of call for them, I believe. I remember at least one, maybe.
No, I think that there was two comments made and they were inside, but they were standing room only. The people were, you know. It was a little bit more intimidating in this atmosphere that way for anybody that was making comment, just because of the way it was laid out.
Yeah, you got to kind of shuffle by, you know.
Was it their congregants that were here?
Yeah.
So if you cannot get the other location, I would, hopefully you would know that before the meeting, and actually tell the applicant, look. If your people show up and we don't have enough room, we're going to have to postpone the public hearing. So have a couple here, but do not ask your whole company. That way it won't be as crowded.
And I think they were probably concerned and they wanted to have enough people that if there was a lot of people the other.
They wanted to have enough.
I think that was really what it was. But yeah, so we, we'll make a note that we tried to change locations to the village today.
In advance of the eighth, if you could call over to Town Hall and just get it, because we have to set it on the eighth. So if we could know Town Hall's availability before, because I don't remember what.
Right, you're not talking about having it on the eighth.
You're talking about having it in.
The last time we did it was, we, we said, subject to confer. If we could have, if we could have the town scheduled before the eighth, we can set it for that date at Town Hall.
And they should have their, they should have their schedule locked in.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And it's going to be for the May meeting.
For the second meeting in May.
It may have to be a special meeting.
Yeah, what you'd like to do is schedule the meeting for May 28th. If the town says we're booked that day, but we're available May 29th.
Right.
Then we're going to make a decision to see if that'll work.
Yeah, that's.
I just, if we have it in. Rather than wait till the eighth and then we have to call them back and know we couldn't get Town Hall, yes, we could, you know.
Right, no, nail it down.
We're set on the eighth.
Yep.
Or at worst, at least let the congregation know that, you know, maybe we can have it a little more balanced.
Right.
Not so overwhelming.
There's no minutes tonight, right?
I saw none in the, I saw none on the agenda.
Nope.
On the drive.
I was just double checking. Good, I think.
Motion to close.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I think, remember Kelly made the motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All right, remember Heather Necton, our second, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful night, everyone.